Hit the mic, or they won't hear you.
No.
Didn't we have Ted on a screen? Who did we have on screen? Jeremy was on a screen during COVID, wasn't he?
Pre-COVID, I did one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a work conference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Help make sure we had the infrastructure in place.
Yes, we tested it. That was our testing.
That's right.
Yeah, that was awesome.
It'd be really cool if we could put it up on that screen.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Eric. Well, you feeling all right? You don't sound good.
God, I think it'll all be all good.
All right.
With him.
Y'all don't say anything to Mr. Plumlee than which he has to talk.
Wait, but I had more questions about...
Jimmy's got a PowerPoint for him.
All right, well, if you are called on to speak, I'm just gonna put my mic up to the computer so everybody can hear you. I think everybody in the room can hear you.
Huh? I know, he means everybody up here.
I think the difference between last week and this week is, this week, everybody has ramped back up with practices and workouts and all that stuff. That's happening this week, and last week it wasn't enough. We're gonna try to survive this first week back.
There is a football game on tonight. I mean, there's...
I heard there's a football game.
I know, so...
Doesn't impact anybody up here, so...
No, but it's still, there's a football game on tonight, so... So they might be broadcasting it as like their pre-game show until, at their house, until our meeting, I mean, until the game starts.
That's probably what they're doing.
Yes.
I think, that would be great.
Yes. About that? We're not talking about that.
Did you know a couple last, last couple of season leaves? Yeah, I told y'all the mics are hot, and y'all were saying the things guaranteed to do.
I thought mine was good. We're the pre-game show. That was a good one, right?
I liked that, yeah.
We're the pre-game show.
For once, I'm being reserved.
I have 5:45. Let's call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand for the moment of silence in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam reporter, if you call the roll, please.
Chair Harrison?
I don't know.
Chair interim?
Interim chair.
Vice Chair Harrison, I think we're still going that. Um, Keith Acton?
Present.
Deborah Thomas?
Present.
Jeremy Burnett?
Here.
Michelle Childs?
Here.
Superintendent Horrell?
Here.
We do have a quorum, Mr. Superintendent. Would you please lead us through our agenda?
I will. The first item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment.
Would anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing none, next item.
Next item is our reports section, starting with the TLN representative update.
We do not have one, but General Assembly opens tomorrow, so there will be a report next month.
Ms. Childs, next item.
Uh, next item is the superintendent's report. I do wanna share just a number of things with the board this month. First of all, I was not able to be with you in person last month, although, as was noted, I was watching and enjoying the meeting from home. Wasn't feeling great, and neither was Ms. Millsbaugh at the time, but I do wanna thank Ms. Deloso for stepping in in my stead, Assistant Principal Angie Deloso, Ms. Millsbaugh for all the work she did to prep the meeting, Jessie Rosales for her presence and her participation in the meeting, and then Camille Stomp, who works with Ms. Millsbaugh and me in the central office. As far as I could tell, the meeting, the receptions, the swearing-in, all just went exceptionally well, so thank you to the board and those individuals for making sure that all happened. I did wanna note, there were several teachers that were not able to attend the tenure reception, and I personally delivered those tenure certificates to their classrooms. I made sure it was periods where they had students at the start of class, and they all got rounds of applause from at least one class of students there, so we're proud of all of those. Uh, I wanted to just give some updates. This has been a theme for some time. We are still working on getting the final approval from the Jones family on the extension of Campus Drive. I have very recently shared the urgency of that approval, and I know they are also working with some urgency to make sure that we can get that finalized. Our goal is to get that out to bid, really, at this point, as soon as possible, and if possible, start construction in the spring, as soon, as early in the spring as possible. I'm told that there's a possibility, if that all happens, that we might be able to get it open, at least at the start or near the start of the next school year, which would be a year ahead of the time when we must have it in place. But I think, as members of this board have noted, it would be great to get it in place sooner, because traffic does continue to present a challenge, the kind of challenge that schools with a lot of students trying to get there have. We've also had conversations about, very soon, the ninth grade students that may begin driving to school, so that will be a first for Lakeland School System, but that's definitely in the hopper as well. I also wanna note some things that we're working on. We have put out our request for a proposal and received that proposal from Jerome McKibben, who does our projections every year, so that process will start, so we can begin to have a good idea of how many students we might anticipate next year, as the ninth graders become tenth graders, and then we continue to monitor the enrollment in all the other grade levels. We plan to start, actually, tomorrow, posting teaching positions specifically for the high school, as we did last year. We're gonna try to get ahead of that schedule, and we're looking at posting for two, these are all high school positions at this point, two English teachers, two math teachers, two science teachers, a social studies teacher, an additional Spanish teacher, an art teacher, a gym teacher, and two special education teachers. So that was, that will, but the first round. There'll be additional postings as we move forward, and some that we, just by the nature of the position, we wouldn't post until a little closer to the start of the next school year. But we are rocking and rolling for next year. As you know, we've had another round of case testing, and Mr. Adler is here, and we'll share the data with you on our, as our first agenda item, and give you the details on that. I did wanna note something on something that Ms. Childs has kept us informed upon, and that is the library collections bill. We have made the decision, as an administrator, to move forward with cataloging the classroom libraries, and what we're doing now is trying to get a survey of what that might entail, how many individual books are in each teacher classroom collection, so that we can then put a plan in place that involves, we hope, our goal is the least amount of disruption or even trouble for the teachers themselves. So we'll keep you guys posted on what that looks like. Right now, we are in what we believe to have been compliance before a memo from the State Department of Education mentioned that classroom collections should also be included, but we fully intend to be in compliance with that law. I just wanna make that note. We're also working on an innovative schools grant that school systems in Tennessee have the opportunity to apply for. It's a half a million dollar grant that has to focus on a CTE area. It has to involve collaboration with the community, and after several months, really, since the summer started of conversation and research and focus, we feel that the best use of that grant will be to focus on bio-stem as one aspect of our STEM program. That's the intention right now. We've been exploring those options that fit the interest of the students, the needs of the community, and our own instructional goals, so that's what we're working towards at this point, and we're excited to share additional details as those come up. We're also, right now, at this time of year, we're in the process of collecting ImpactAid information, where we find out how many students on our campus are affiliated with federal properties. This tends to mainly be our military families, but really, anybody that's affiliated with a federal property, that there are some additional dollars that can come to the school system. Speaking of our military families, both schools have submitted this year's documentation for the Purple Star Award. We're very proud that both of our schools are Purple Star. Recognize schools that has to do with our school's commitments to military families, and I will note that designation and the Interstate Military Compact continues to drive a lot of our decision-making when we talk about things in our school that might impact military families. We do, we do consider that very carefully. We are also talking through registration procedures for next year. You can get this theme. A lot of what we're doing has to do with next year already. That will occur in March on a similar schedule that we went through last year. It is our intention to have the registration almost completely online. Again, that was a good process, really, from, we feel like, from the families' perspectives. There's some things that we're gonna do to make sure that when we get the data, that we were able to analyze it and utilize it maybe more effectively than we did on the timetable last year. We had a lot of new folks starting in the attendance positions last year, but we've learned a lot from our experience, and for the most part, the end-user experience will be very similar, because we thought it was smooth. I also wanted to note something. We were kind of, I don't wanna say early adapters, but we've been very conscious of having AEDs in place, the Automatic Defibrillators. I know that's been in the news with the NFL player that collapsed on the field, and we have a number of them in place. We've got some new ones that are in the buildings. We have some new ones that were, even more new ones, that were kinda caught up in the supply chain. So we're working on making sure that every external building on the Lakeland Prep campus has access to an AED as well. So just something to note. And that includes, right now, there's not one at the Annex facility, so we're, that's on our list to add. And finally, report cards will go out tomorrow, including, I know this board likes to benchmark, the very first high school report cards. So the first report cards with high school grades on them will go out through Skyward tomorrow. So that's the end of my report.
For the superintendent, Ms. Thomas.
Can you list the teaching positions one more time?
I sure can. We had two English teachers, two math teachers, two chemistry teachers specifically, is what we're posting for, one social studies teacher, one Spanish teacher, one art teacher, one PE teacher, and two sped teachers. That's with the first wave. I will note there are other positions that we're still talking through and kinda crunching numbers, but that's what we are really certain we're gonna need.
Who's trained on the AEDs?
The AEDs themselves are, they're, you take it out, it starts telling you what to do. I would have to get a list from Blake Warren in terms of teachers that have been through CPR training, but it is a lot. We've got a, we've got a pretty good number, but I...
But I mean, like, any, even if they hadn't specifically been trained, any adult could use them, or any, any staff member if...
You grab it, hit on, and a voice starts telling you what to do, and it actually analyzes the...
And also, each year, we do an AED refresher course through safe schools, so all the staff does that, too.
There is video training for every employee. Yeah, thank you.
Further that, does that include, like, non-school-based employees, like some of our coaching staff or whatever? Do they go through that same training since they are out there, or if not, add them to the training?
We have talked about that. At this time, coaches and substitutes do not complete safe schools training, but we had, it's something we've discovered.
Just, can you expand further? Like, I know you said, can you get the board a list of who CPR trained? I just have had a personal experience recently where they certainly use the AED, but until the AED was able to be unpacked and gone through, I know it's not like that. The people that were around, the adults that are around, were able to complete CPR and the, you know, to keep the heart going and the blood flowing and all that, so when you get a chance, it's not, like, immediate. But if you could send a list of, like, approximate number or whatever of who's CPR trained and where we focus that at. Only TSAA that coaches that have to, 'cause like, we have a swim coach, a golf, I don't know if all those are TSAA or not.
I know we all, our coaches have to complete that.
We'll find out and get you that information. Yep.
Any more questions?
Um, I had a couple. So when you get a chance, can you send the board the updated enrollment numbers for, like, second semester, kinda where we're at, just as a benchmark from where we were? If we've had any, I mean, or people go out, just... And then, can you give an update on, there were some punch list things from the construction at LPS that, I don't, can you give an update on? I mean, like, the center, I think, the, at the entrance way, that was one thing. Can you give an update of some of those things, kinda where they're at? Are they caught in the backlog of COVID still? We've got some...
No, not for the most part. We actually went over that list in our construction meeting today. The USDA has requested kind of a projected final date of completion. Not, we've already had substantial completion, but the date that everything would be completed by which we would issue the final checks to the contractor. That date is April 1st, and that's mainly to give us enough time for some things that we can't do before spring break. That includes the water cut crest that'll go in the lobby. That's expected to be done over spring break. There's still some additional regrading at the baseball and softball fields, and some work, some sod work down at the pole vault area that's happening. There's a fairly extensive list of lock and key and hardware changes that are being made that are gonna start, we think, next week, and will probably continue. I think it's about three and a half weeks worth of work. Now, there are some of those items that are in supply chain delays, but that's one of the other reasons that we bumped it back to April 1st. So the round of punch lists has occurred. Renaissance has gone back and repunched, as they call it, the interior of the building, and we've gone from a list that was like this to a list that's like this. So that is, that is ongoing, but we still have, you know, a significant amount of retainage that we keep for the contractor. So everybody's on the same page in terms of what needs to be done.
So target is April, or the final date we're seeing to the USDA is April 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the last question I had was, I know you talked about the teacher shops we're posting. When y'all kinda get to a point at which you have, I don't wanna say a final, but a pretty close-to-final list of the courses that are gonna be available for the high schoolers? I know we have a list of all the courses we wish to offer, but I understand that may not be what's available for next year. That could be at full build-out and things like that. Could you send the board a list, kind of, what we're targeting offering specifically for next year, for 10th grade, for the new grade coming on?
Targeting offering?
Yes, 'cause I know we talked about teachers' positions, so those kind of, like, what all those offering...
Sure, yeah.
Whenever, I know y'all might not be final yet, but once you get to the point where you're pretty close to final, if you could send that, just for knowledge and information, all I have, anybody?
Got it.
Right, next item.
All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda.
Do we need to go through anything on the financial summary, or does anybody...
Oh, thank you. Thanks for keeping me in line, Ms. Vice Chair. Yeah, the December financial summary is available. I did go over that with Ms. Rosales. She said there was not anything of note that she felt like the board needed to be made aware of.
Any questions regarding the financial summary? None, next item.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and I do have several things that I want the board to consider. I'll let you all go first, but...
Is there anything anybody wishes to add or remove from the agenda? Adding any items that anybody wishes to... Anything, anybody, I will ask this question, anything anybody feels like should be moved to the consent agenda?
For 11?
Objection to moving item 11 to the consent?
A few comments on 11. I'm fine with moving it to consent agenda.
I actually, but I would like to speak to one position on 11 when we get there, if that's okay.
Well, could we potentially leave it on the regular agenda and just take them as a batch?
Or...
A batch, just clarify. Instead of going through each, each item specifically, just let Dr. Horrell speak to the one that he wants, and then consider them as a group.
Yeah, I think we did that before, too.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think that would be great.
Objection to the board, when we get to number 11, we'll speak to the specific item and then, as one item. Any, all right, Dr. Horrell, you go ahead with your changes.
Okay.
Thanks.
First of all, I'm requesting that the board add the appointment of the Policy Committee this agenda.
Any objection from the board to adding this? Is there any objection to adding it along with number two, mission appointment? And we'll add that with item number two.
Second, I would like the board to consider adding an update to Policy 4.209, which you have in front of you as a hard copy, Alternative Credit Options, and that we will add to the website for the record.
So as item, is item number 15? Okay, making sure I don't lose track. Item number 15 would be alternative, that, 4.209, any objection by the board? None? That one we will add as item number 15?
And then, I would also like to add, this is related to item 15. In fact, can we make this one 15 and then make the one we just did 16? It'll make more sense.
So that one, 16, all right, what's 15?
Okay, 15 is approval of Virtual School Village, I'm sorry, approval of Village Virtual as an approved alternative credit option.
Credit or alternative school option?
Per the policy, I'm calling it alternative credit option, 'cause it's related to that policy.
Gotcha. For 15 being approval of Virtual Village as an approved alternative credit option, and number 16 being the alternative credit options policy. Hearing none, those items are added to the discussion items, agendas of 15 and 16. Any more items anybody wishes to add? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
All right, next item is the consent agenda, which we didn't place anything on.
Let's get to the next item.
Okay. The next item, we move into the discussion items, and the first item is a presentation by Matt Adler, Director of Assessment, Accountability, and Data.
Mr. Adler, the floor is yours.
Let me say, first of all, before he begins, Mr. Adler has just done a tremendous job staying on top of the data. We've had a number of discussions about how much our assessment data and this fairly new MVP data is being utilized by the teachers this year, and just wanna commend him for his efforts even before the presentation starts. So thank you, Mr. Adler.
Thank you, Dr. Horrell, and thank you, board, for allowing me to present this evening. Happy New Year to you all, for those of you that I have not said Happy New Year to. This is formerly known as CASE. CASE has been around for many, many years. It is now known as Master Review Predictive Assessment. I shorten that to MVP or MVPAs. MVP is a good way to remember it, because, of course, it is all revolved around our students, and our students definitely are our real MVPs for Lakeland. So to give you some context, we have three benchmarks per year, and we have one early on in the year to kind of establish a baseline. The second one is around end of first semester, and the third one is about a month before TCAP begins, so teachers have time to look at the benchmark results and to review, to hit standards that need to be retaught, or to fill in the gaps of standards that have not been met yet. TCAP begins in April, on April 17th, and goes through May 5th, and grades 2 through 9 will be tested. Grade 2 is an optional test, and grades 3 through 9, or grades 3 through 8 are the achievement level tests, and grade 8, Algebra 1, is EOC, and grade 9 is all EOCs as well. The content area is tested. As you can see, grade 2 is ELA in math. Grades 3 through 5, ELA in math and science, which is in line with the state testing. And grade 6 through 8, ELA, math, science, and social studies. Grade 8, as I said, you have Algebra 1 as EOC plus, for those selected students. And then, grade 9 are all your EOC courses, which is English 1, Algebra 1, geometry, and biology. Oh, sorry, before I go on with that, just to give some context, most of you already know this, but ELA from the first benchmark all the way through the third is comprehensive. It is the whole year, but, so you expect to see improvement as the year goes on, as the students learn more. In the other subjects, the benchmarks are based on standards that teachers, the content area representatives have submitted, certain standards for pacing guides, until you get to Benchmark 3, which then becomes a comprehensive assessment. So for purposes of this presentation, we're gonna look at Benchmark 1 and Benchmark 2. So ELA, just keep in mind, is comprehensive, and math, science, and social studies are based on the pacing guides that the teachers have submitted. When we look at English Language Arts, each one of these slides, and I know you already have seen this personally, it's broken down by grade. The first benchmark, which is the projected proficiency. The second benchmark, based on the projected proficiency. The difference between Benchmark 2 and Benchmark 1, I wanted to kinda highlight that to see if there's improvement, or if there's any decreases, or if they're negligible, or whatever it may be. And then, 2022 TCAP proficiency, is there as a reference? And then, again, this is apples to oranges, but I just wanted to kinda compare Benchmark 2, and I'll do the same thing with Benchmark 3, and how it compares to last year's TCAP, just to see if we're tracking in the right direction, if areas that are maybe a possible concern, really for school leadership and for our instructional supervisors to work with the teachers, and then also areas that we're actually improving and we're really showing some advancement. So in grades 2 and 3 and 4, for ELA, you can all see that there was improvement from Benchmark 2 compared to Benchmark 1, which is a positive. When you look at how Benchmark 2 compares to last year's TCAP, grade 2 and grade 3 are improving, but grade 3 is 2% increase, you know, so that may or may not be negligible. And then, I would not worry about the negative .5 degree, because, again, 2022 TCAP compared to halfway through the year, there's a whole lot more teaching that still needs to go on, and that will occur. So grades 2 through 4 are tracking in the right direction, which is pretty positive. You look at grades 5 through 8, and we'll start there, just with the achievement, you can see that there's growth, or there's improvement in grades 6 and 7 and 8 from Benchmark 2 compared to Benchmark 1. And when you look at the last column, grades 6 and grade 8 are showing improvements compared to where they were last year. For the most part, when you look at 5 through 8, compared from Benchmark 2 to Benchmark 1, that negative 1 for 5th grade is not significant, especially when you're looking at a culmination of students. So they're all tracking in the right direction, which is, it's expected for ELA, because, as I said again, it's comprehensive, so they know more, so you would expect them to improve, and the data is showing that. And in grade 9, we have no data from last year, because it's our first high school year, but there is improvement within the benchmarks, which is good. Grades 2, 3, and 4, you can see that there's improvement in grade 2, even though it's a slight improvement. And again, these are based on pacing guides that teachers give. So these are snapshots within the year. And the way I look at MVP assessments, it's checkups. They are, they give us data in plenty of time to respond to the data, or to have the teachers respond to the data with the assistance of instructional supervisors and school administration to be ready for TCAP when it actually counts. So again, you know, if you know what's wrong, you can fix it in plenty of time. If you are tracking in the right direction, you keep doing what you're supposed to, you keep doing what you're doing to get those results. And you can see in grades 2 and 4, it's really negligible from the comparison for the benchmarks, and same thing with the comparison to last year's 2022 TCAP. Grades 5 through 8... Grades five through eight, you have improvements in grade five, six, s- and seven compared from first benchmark to the second benchmark. And you have an improvement compared to last year's TCAP in grade six. And that's important to highlight because grade six has been historically an area where we see a dip from fifth grade to sixth grade. So when you see improvements, it's encouraging that some things that are put in place are actually making a, a difference. And then in other areas, and I, I don't want to highlight this too much or, you know, have any red flags because this is still winter. This is still before the end of the first semester. You know, we expect these results to change because there's things that are put in place at the school level to improve, um, eighth grade math and to really, uh, make a difference, um, with the time that we have left before TCAP, which is a significant amount of time. When you look at your EOC courses, which is Algebra One for eighth grade, Algebra One ninth grade and geometry, geometry showed the biggest improvement from the first benchmark to the second benchmark, which is twenty-three, twenty-three point percentage points of an improvement, which is remarkable. And you have a few decreases in Algebra One, um, and for eighth grade, which is your honors kids and Algebra One ninth grade, which is everybody. But again, the dip is less than ten percent. So again, I don't think it's heartburn to really, um, to look at, but it's something to keep an eye on to make sure that the right, um, strategies are put in place to make a difference with, and no pun intended with math, but to make a difference with, you know, improving these results. Science, I color coded it a little bit just for grades three and four. You can see that grade three had a significant improvement between the benchmarks and they're on track. I'd say when you compare it to the twenty twenty-two TCAP, if it's less than ten percent change, they're on track to, you know, either perform at the twenty twenty-two level or improve moving forward. And you can also see improvements in grade five, grade seven and grade eight. And again, when you, uh, grade seven, you see a double digit, um, decrease compared to twenty twenty-two, but again, it's halfway through the year compared to the end of the year. So you have to keep that in mind as well. And then biology, um, there's a slight decrease from the be- uh, compared to benchmark two to compared to benchmark one. But again, it's very slight. So, you know, you find a couple of kids that are having a bad day or, you know, they didn't take it seriously, you know, that can explain that. And that's all speculation, of course. And lastly, the social studies, when you have six, seven and eighth, um, again, seventh and eighth are very close. They're, you know, one percent or, uh, less. Um, they are, they're eighth grade improved, but again, it's not something to go and do cartwheels over because of the point four percent of an improvement from benchmark two to benchmark one. But, um, slight decrease in seventh grade and a slight decrease with sixth grade. But again, when you look at the last column, where are we compared to last year in twenty twenty-two TCAP? Eighth grade, I would say is on track. Seventh grade is close to being on track. And I would put some effort and focus into sixth grade, uh, social studies, just to make sure that, um, they are going to be where we need to be when that time comes. And one thing for those of you that know Tennessee, uh, standards, the social studies standards are ridiculously long. There's a huge amount of material that students have to know. Um, so there's a lot of teaching that still has to go on. Overall, the summary from, uh, I broke it down to two levels, benchmark one to benchmark two improvements. You see that there's improvements in ELA for grades two, three, four, six, seven, eight and nine, so almost across the board. For math, there was improvement in grades two, five, six, seven and geometry. In science, there was improvements in grades three, four, five, seven and eight. And in social studies in grade eight, and again, social studies is only three grades, so six, seven, eight. Um, when I look at that for the improvements, I'm encouraged because the teachers are doing what they're do- what they need to do to respond to the data. And I believe, and I think Dr. Horrell already has said this, this is the very, one of the first years that teachers are owning their data and looking at their data and digging into their data, um, to really make improvements from an instructional standpoint, which is very, very encouraging. And in twenty twenty-two TCAP compared to how they did in the second benchmark, again, somewhat apples to oranges, but it's still, it's a good little checkpoint. ELA, you see improvements in grades two, three, six and eight, so improvements at the elementary school and improvements at the middle school. And in math, grades two and six, um, you see some improvements and math is historically a area that we need to focus on. And we sometimes struggle with, but there is improvement and there is some encouraging news there. Um, with that said, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer. And if I can't answer tonight, I'll get back to you through Dr. Horrell.
Adler, I know we've talked about this, but I think I'm remembering this right. So if I were to look at the ELA results, fifth through ninth, that differs between the twenty-two twenty-two TCAP and benchmark two, the twenty-two twenty-two TCAP is still, um, that's last year's sixth graders, right? So that one eighth, um, that eight tenth of a percentage point difference there.
Is what, yes, last year's sixth.
So this year's seventh graders, but, but you're still, that's why you're tied, that's a little bit of apples to oranges.
Correct, correct. And we're looking at grade level because the grade level instructional standards are not changing. The students do change. Um, I did break it down, um, I debated about including some of that information or not, and it just wasn't fair to compare bench, even benchmark data because the benchmarks have been given at different times this year compared to last year. And also, um, looking at cohorts, you know, unless I took, oops, sorry, unless I took every student and co- and lined them up with the students that are here and the students that were with us last year, that's where you're going to get some more accurate data and that's just, it's very time consuming. I'm more than happy to do that. But, um, I feel that there's, if you're comparing the cohorts from the instructional standards with the grade six standards or grade seven standards, I think you're getting a better piece of the information of how, what instruction is happening compared to comparing student to student from last year to this year. And also with developmental stages and, you know, changes and adolescents, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into play in terms of those results. So that's kind of why I left that out.
And can I, I'll add something there too. One of the things that when we benchmark, we, a lot of our benchmarks mirror the way that the accountability system measures us. Uh, the accountability system measures us based on, you know, the way we did. They set our AMOs, our annual measurable objectives, not by cohorts, but by the way the third graders this year did compared to the third graders last year. When we do our school improvement plans, our school improvement plans seem, tend to say, our goal is to improve third grade instruction by, for example, by this many percentage points. Or eighth grade math may be one for this year, uh, by this many percentage points. So they, they don't tend to track by cohorts. And I, I used the example to, to somebody else recently. I, I think the problem with these different tests is in the, the percentages on the seventh grade English test versus the sixth grade English test, um, you may have the same score, but your percentile may be completely different. That same, that same sixty-seven percent, you may be in the ninety-ninth percentile in seventh grade and sixty-seven percent is in the, you know, fifty-eighth percentile. It, it, so it's, it's harder and I think distorting to look at the cohorts, uh, as, as much as it makes sense on one level and really compare progress.
And along those lines too, is cohorts are also compared with our growth measures. When the growth measures come in, our cohorts, you have last year's sixth graders are compared to that same cohort as seventh graders throughout the state with a very convoluted, very hard to explain, but nobody knows how to explain, uh, formula for your growth measure.
Tvos.
The Tvos, exactly. And your Tvos growth is like, that's where the comparison of the cohort and are we making strides in that area? With achievement, it's really best to go grade level to grade level. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Um, so I, I, I think I said, we've said this before, but I notice on most of the, on most of the subjects, if not all of them, we see a big difference between, um, students that are today's seventh, eighth and ninth graders compared to the ones even a year younger than that because they had three days versus five days that one year. We still seem to be having those like longitudinal issues, you know, because our teachers make a big difference. So not having, which was out of our control, but not having those two days you know, is still having lingering effects, um, because you can just see right there, there's a big difference between our current seventh, eighth and ninth and the ones that are younger than that. So that's just one observation I keep seeing. And hopefully at some point we'll, in a few years, that will be over, but it's a lingering issue. Um, and I know on eighth grade math, it's always an issue too that our highest achievers are in Algebra One. So that skews our eighth grade math a little bit, but having said that, obviously the drop off is a little concerning and it's on everyone's radar, obviously. Um, but, uh, I guess the two questions I had was, um, when will, will students and parents get this? And then next, um, there are concerns with the third grade because we all know that's like an issue unless it gets fixed legislatively. On this huge high stakes third grade ELA. So I just wanted to ask specifically about that too.
Yeah, the first, to answer your first question, the individual student reports, and I have not mentioned that part of this, but each student gets an individual student report, Mr. Acton, that shows their areas of strength, their areas of weakness they need to work on and what standards they missed. Um, those are school-based decisions, but I believe I heard a little whisper that they're going home tomorrow. I know at the elementary, um, that's what I heard, that individual student reports will be going home with students tomorrow. I'm, I can't speak of LPS, uh, I'm not sure. Um, but those are available. Every teacher has those individual student reports available for their students. And so if you don't have one brought home by your child, I would reach out to the teacher and say, hey, is there a way that I could get the individual student report? In terms of grade three retention, and yes, that is a kicker law that is going to cause some heartburn. Ms. DeLose and I, we have looked at some of these initial numbers, uh, from benchmark two, uh, to see how many students were performing at a level one compared to performing at a level two, to kind of start highlighting who needs some triage prior to the high stakes testing. And, um, we are constantly looking at that kind, we're hoping that the legislators do make different choices, uh, in some cases. I think I can s- speak of that. Everybody agrees to that. Um, but we are also already looking at what students fall into those categories, what's, what parents need to be communicated with, um, to start to prepare them and also what interventions can be put into place to get more students in grade three into the, you know, level three or upper level twos where they're not going to be concerned with that.
So could they, if you felt it would benefit them, could they get like, you know, after school tutoring already if that was something that could benefit them? Or that's only like if they're in lieu of retention, then they could do that?
For sake of my position, I just don't want to speak of that because those are school-based decisions, but any extra support that students can have prior to the summer, um, to help them achieve, uh, a better performance on TCAP, um, is always a win.
Um, I was talking to Dr. Horrell about this, just, um, from an assessment perspective. So every year, and I'll take ELA as an example. So the blueprint changes for what the standards are that are tested. And the standards themselves change. So if you think about going from third grade to fourth grade, there's a huge leap in what students are asked to do in fourth grade. For example, third grade, they're mostly basing, um, items on the test on explicit, um, answers, things that they can point to. But then in fourth grade, for the first time, they start having to draw inferences, which is a really difficult thing for kids to have to do. So when you compare, when you track the cohort, it's not really showing you, um, how well they've learned the same things because they aren't the same things anymore. It gets harder. And so those numbers typically are going to change for that reason. Fifth grade in ELA, they have to compare and contrast things for the first time. And so that's another part of the blueprint that doesn't even exist when they're in third grade. I don't know if that helps, but, um, from an assessment perspective, um, I think some people think that, that saying, oh, well, gosh, you know, this grade is really getting it done. This grade is really struggling. But it is standards dependent, which is what this is one hundred percent about. I just wanted to add a little, um, perspective. I thought that might help a little bit.
Always thank you. Very informative decision, very informative presentation and I appreciate your time to putting this together and all the analysis that goes into it.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I hope to see you later this spring.
You'll see us, you'll see us. Happy New Year.
Same here.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
All right, next item.
Next item is discussion action on election of school board chair, vice chair and policy committee.
Policy committee member, right?
Uh, well, typically there is a, there is a total three-person policy committee that's, uh, approved by the board and includes one board member.
So it's the, I guess we'll call it the liaison or I, I don't know whatever. It's just the person from the board. We're not voting on the whole committee. The committee is not changing, right?
We, we still have to approve the committee itself.
I've got you. Okay.
So we, if, if we want to make it a separate item, we can. It's a little different than the election.
That's fine. I just want to make sure. Um, is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
Motion in a second. I have a motion in a second. If there's no objection from the board, I'll take these individually. Is there any objection from the board to make them individually? All right, is there any nominations for school board chair?
Laura Harrison?
We have a nomination. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a nomination in the second.
That's okay.
Is there any more nominations?
Move to close nominations for chair.
Motion in a second. So the item before us is for Laura Harrison for school board chair. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all.
There's your first awkward moment.
Yes. Not first, it will not be the last. All right, so I will open the floor to nominations for vice chair. Is, who do we have to nom- or who, is there any nominations for vice chair?
I'm Nate, Jeremy, uh, excuse me, Jeremy Burnett.
Just making sure. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, I will close the nominations for vice chair. All in favor of Jeremy? Just for clarity for the record, Jeremy Burnett for vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item. So would you like to, like, list the names of the, the school base members?
So, uh, okay, yes, I would propose that the policy committee this year consists of Kim Lewis from Lakeland Elementary School, Tammy Bovee from Lakeland Preparatory School and a school board member to be determined by the school board membership.
Are there any nominations for policy committee, for the school board member to serve as policy committee representative?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Thomas.
Is that okay with you before I, before you get thrown under the bus?
Yeah, that's fine.
Are there any other nominations for policy committee from the school board? Have a motion to close? Is there a second? You have a second? Um, so nominations are closed for the policy committee representative for the school board. All in favor of the policy committee with Deborah Thomas?
Kim Lewis and Tammy Bovee.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is the approval of the business meeting minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, or are there any changes or updates or discussion on the minutes from December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on approval of policy four point two oh nine one, physical education alternative credit. This is the second reading.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second? Thomas will second. Um, we have a motion in the second. Dr. Horrell, is there, has there been any changes since our last?
There have not been any changes. I appreciate Eric Plumley for, uh, researching some of the questions that were brought up at the last meeting. I've spoken to board members individually about those questions and, uh, we, we, basically, Mr. Plumley and I both recommend the policy as it stands.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on update to policy four point six oh oh grading system.
Are there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Um, is there any discussion on this item?
One line, adding the one line.
We're basically cleaning up. At some point, I think we talked about during, during COVID, we made some changes to the exam exemptions. And then what we found is that we, we cleaned one uh, instance of that language up and not the other. So this is making it clear that any So this is making it clear that any unexcused absence in a course uh, that qualifies for semester exam exemption will disqualify the student from all exemptions.
Any discussion on this item? I was just gonna say, um, it, within the policy, it's already listed. I think it's just listing it in a higher paragraph now, so.
Correct.
If people just look at one spot and don't look at the other, there's no confusion there. Because it took me a minute.
Thank you for pointing that out, Michelle's pointing that out. That's right.
Thank you, Michelle. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, next item.
Next item is discussion action on update to policy 4.7000 Testing Programs.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Dr. Horrell?
Yes, this policy update is a response to state law that required specific testing uh, criteria and procedures be outlined for the awarding of credit for students that are transferring from uh, category three and four schools, which are church-related or homeschools in the category four, and uh, category three are online schools. So we worked with uh, both schools to make sure that the policy reflects our procedures.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, next item.
Next item is discussion action on approval of policy 6.204 Foreign Exchange Students. This is a first reading.
So as a reminder, just to the board on a first reading, this will be on our agenda next month for a second reading, just as a reminder. Um, is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
I have a motion, do we have a second? Say, Ms. Thomas will second. Um, Dr. Horrell, will you speak to this one?
Yes, again, with the uh, the addition of our high school grades, uh, we wanted to make sure we have a policy that considers and allows for uh, foreign exchange students to uh, participate at Lakeland Preparatory School. Uh, this is based on a T double S double A model policy, but there are a couple of places where it's basically at the school systems, or they advise it to be at the school system's discretion. Uh, one of those is the number of grades that are included. Uh, and we've determined that it would be best to offer this for grades nine through 11. A lot of reasons not to do foreign exchange students in the senior year. And then uh, also setting a number of students that would basically be the max of foreign exchange students you could accommodate. And we set that number at two, uh, which seemed appropriate for our school size um, based on experience and then what other school systems offer. They, they tend to be from, anywhere from one to maybe five. I mean, it doesn't get very high typically, but two felt like a good place to start.
Any discussion on this item? So um, what is the funding for this?
They are typically funded by host organizations.
Oh, I meant, um.
Are you referring to, do we get money from the state for them to attend the school?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I'm not gonna step out and say yes, because I'm not 100% sure of that.
Well, I just thought that might be why it was limited on.
Let me find that out, because I, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I think it's, I mean, I, I think it's an awesome thing to have. Um, and so I was just wondering if that was kind of a factor on number, you know, we landed on due to that. Um, I mean, I think it's a great cultural experience for that student and the students at our school to be able to, you know, learn from each other. Um, I, I don't have any opposition, but as we grow, to possibly consider, dependent on funding and other, and, you know, what our experience is with it, if we could potentially increase it, like, down the road.
Let me find that out for you.
I think you were, the, the reason you headed it to now is it says because of limited classroom availability, so you don't want to um, open things up when, if these students, for example, need to take all the honors courses and we have a particularly high enrollment in some of the honors courses, then it would make those classes have even more students than they currently have. So I think that, was that the thought that?
It's that, and there, there are certain challenges, obviously, for, for somebody coming in for a, you know, a potentially short period of time. Um, and just, uh, at least starting, starting slow.
Yeah.
Certainly, um, but also, you, you don't wanna, we do, we do want our students to have that experience of having foreign exchange students. You don't want to become a destination school for foreign exchange students necessarily, just because, again, there, there are, it's, it's, by nature, it's a transient situation. They're, they're there for a little bit, and they're out, and that, that impacts, you know, school staffing and class dynamics and all those things, so.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving this item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, next item.
Next item is discussion action on update to policy 6.313 Discipline Procedures.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
I have a motion, I'll make the second, we have a motion in a second. Dr. Horrell, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, this, this only changes uh, one aspect of this policy, and it removes the line that says a student shall not be suspended solely because charges are pending against him or her in juvenile or other court. So that is removed from this version of the policy.
Question on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, next item.
Next item is discussion action on update to policy 6.319 Alternative Education.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second, Dr. Horrell?
Uh, yes, this adds a line about a virtual education, uh, I'm sorry, alternative education, where, where they're located. This adds the location that an alternative education program can be a virtual education program that is accessed off-campus from the student's place of residence, and also clarifies that transportation for students must be provided or arranged by the parents or guardians.
Question on this policy? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, next item.
Uh, next item, which a, a note is, is numbered incorrectly, so we're gonna call this nine and a half, I think. No, that's, uh, that is discussion action on design contract for Lakeland School System Central Office. Uh, that is actually really more of a presentation on this, uh, won't be, uh, I'm sorry, that's not true. There's a presentation, then there will be a request for action at the end of the presentation. If the board will give me just a second, I'm gonna switch presentations here on the, on the uh, screen and, and bring that up for everybody.
Not, we're gonna let him present, and then we will. She prefers to do the motion first, whoever.
Hey, just so we don't forget at the end, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
We have a motion, and I'll second. Now the floor is yours.
Okay, let me now make arrangements to the uh, in here.
Twenty-three, wow, we're there that fast.
All right. So, um, sure everybody can hear me as well, see the screen. So the intention here is basically to uh, to review not only for the board members, but for the community, kind of uh, the history of the Lakeland School System Central Office in terms of locations, in terms of planning. Um, and then at the end, bring a um, recommendation to the board for the next steps in terms of uh, where will the set, the central office location for Lakeland School System be in the long term? That's essentially the question. All right, so uh, again, a lot of this is review, I think, for the board, but just want to make sure the, the, the community, to the extent that they're interested or aware as well. Uh, when, when the school system started, and when, when the superintendent, that's me, was hired at the beginning, uh, I was assigned an office at Lakeland City Hall to begin the school system administration. I was the only employee, so that was appropriate. Uh, it wasn't long after that time where I was doing the work solo to get the school system uh, approved by the state, that obviously, as, as happens, uh, we recognize the need to have other employees in Lakeland School System. And uh, I, I will say during that, even that early time, there was some conversation between the school board, which Ms. Harrison will remember, and maybe others, and the city, and uh, the, the jointly considered the possibility of converting the operation side of City Hall to a school system um, central office location. Uh, we, we even got some rough estimates on cost on that. There were a couple of concerns there, we, we had zero dollars in our fund balance at the time. Um, and the city had just put in their first ever property tax to fund schools, and there was some sensitivity certainly there. Um, I was not in any hurry to have, to be anywhere other than, than where I was, certainly. Um, but there were also concerns about, would that leave enough space for the City Hall employees? And uh, the thought that the, the city itself was growing and might require extra City Hall employees. Why did that jump quickly? Oops. How'd you do that, Mr. Adler, yours was so smooth? All right, uh, over the course of uh, the next uh, what, eight years, eight and a half years, uh, City Hall eventually uh, accommodated eight LSS employees working in five offices. And I don't mean eight different individuals, there were more that came in and out of those positions in some cases. But by the time, by September 2022 rolled around, we were taking up five offices here at City Hall. And let me note how grateful we were and have been historically to have that space. Uh, the city, without exception, was very generous, was very accommodating. Uh, we enjoyed being at Lakeland City Hall, we enjoyed the close contact with the other employees in City Hall. It was a, it was a very uh, nice, pleasant, convenient way to conduct business. Um, but over the course of that time, I mean, really from the beginning, there were conversations between me and the, the three, well, I worked with four city managers, but the, the, the three primarily that had to deal with the space issue, kind of contemplating, when would this arrangement, you know, end? Uh, you know, how, how does the city get the space that it needs as it began to double up employees and offices and use creative spaces within City Hall uh, to assign people to work? It was, it was conversations that we had uh, several times over that time. You got the nice touch there, Mr. Adler. Right, uh, in November of 2017, shortly after opening uh, uh, Lakeland Middle Preparatory School, uh, the Board of Education allocated a million dollars to purchase an additional property for a second elementary or intermediate school. Uh, we did talk about, and the board spoke at that time, uh, that space on the same property for a future central office uh, might also be contemplated as we looked at that space. We pretty much knew by that time that the 94-acre Lakeland Preparatory School site, or the Lakeland Prep site, uh, actually wouldn't accommodate a central office. There was some time when we bought it where we thought, well, this is great, we can, there, there'd be plenty of room. And as we master-planned, it's actually, it's a pretty tight little campus to do all the things that we want to do. There is some extra space for some future things that the board wants to do, but a, a central office was not really in the works. Right, from 2018 to 2020, uh, Dr. Jim Mitchell and I, uh, we, we were in serious negotiations with, as I said, multiple developers. Uh, I can tell you, it was, it was at least five, it may have been six, where we got into, into brass tacks about um, what might cost be, taking some look at preliminary conceptual designs of how might a central office in a school, primarily a school, that was the main goal, but how might a school and a central office layout on these various properties? So for a long time there, it felt like that we, we weren't really making a lot of headway, and we started to, to worry that um, we might not be able to find a site that would accommodate a school, an elementary or intermediate school. Um, however, and uh, we kind of went from, from a famine to feast, I guess. In March 29th of 2021, we started negotiations on the 23-acre site at Lakeland Meadows that we now own. Uh, we believed at the time uh, that it was suitable for an elementary or intermediate school as well as a possible future central office property that would be on US 70. And I'll, I'll show at the end of the presentation that map and just kind of how that lays out and why we, why we thought that. Okay, uh, on April 12th of 2021, after some conversation uh, between the board and the Board of Commissioners, uh, the Board of Education approved a resolution authorizing the executive committee, just a reminder, that's the superintendent and the board chair, to enter into negotiations with the city. And the language from the resolution was on the possibility of a site or facility donation from the city to LSS for a future LSS central office facility. And specifically, the site that was being contemplated, it's in the whereas clauses of the resolution, was Lakeland Town Square. So there was some conversation about a parcel on Lakeland Town Square, and uh, the board um, voted to authorize the executive committee to uh, to participate in those negotiations. Um, we, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of negotiations, um, and, and some of that had to do with these other land deals that were really all happening at the same time, as the next slide will demonstrate, or the next three slides? My clicker at that thing, but um, there it is. Uh, nope. There it is. Uh, so in June 2021, and this one, this one kind of came up as, as a bit of a surprise or a bonus. Uh, we were, we were hoping that the Meadows property was gonna happen, but um, just through some conversations with, with neighbors at the annex, um, we, we found that 25 acres on Old Brownsville Road um, was going to become available. And that property was uh, most intriguing because it was adjacent to the Lakeland Prep property. Uh, and it also included a 2,500-square-foot residential home that was really a package deal with the land. What we were most interested was the land, um, but the home, but it was one owner. They owned the, the, the larger parcel, and then they owned the smaller parcel that had the home on it. And uh, it, it was pretty clear that it was gonna be both or none, uh, at least for the timing that we wanted. So we uh, we wound up pursuing that as well. And including, included in the board's deliberation on that property was the possibility of converting the home to a short-term, at least, central office site to relieve the crowding at City Hall. The hope was that that would solve the short-term problem of how do we provide City Hall with the additional spaces that it needs to do its business. Actually, closed on that one first, October 2021, we closed on the 25 acres on Old Brownsville Road as we continued the negotiations on the Meadows property. And then in February of 2022, we closed on the 23 acres at Lakeland Meadows. March, we moved quickly, March 2022, Renaissance Group Architects were engaged to create a design for the conversion of the Old Brownsville home and offered to donate those services at that point. All right, and in the meantime, when we purchased the home, we, we, we thought, we hoped that the conversion might be pretty simple, um, but we definitely needed to get some cost estimates before we move forward with that and do some additional due diligence. But um, as time crept on to, to the summer of 2022, um, basically, the conversation was, the city was, we, we need at least two offices. We've got folks coming in, we literally have nowhere to put them. Now, what had changed was, we now had Lakeland Prep, and we had a number of empty classrooms. And that had long been discussed as kind of a, a failsafe for at least, you know, a couple of years there. Um, so two of our employees, Tammy Wilson and Kim Pickens, moved from City Hall to work from home so that uh, City Hall could take possession of that room. And we also had, Ms. DeLosa was going to vacate and work from home as well, starting September 15th. In the meantime, we made the decision that rather than kind of move twice and send everybody home and then bring them back, and then maybe wind up at the Old Brownsville home at a later time, we just decided we'll go ahead and move to the unused wing of Lakeland Prep, or one of the unused wings, and just clear out all the space for the City Hall employees. And then it would be on us to make our plans and not hamstring the city in terms of what they did with their space. Shortly thereafter, unbelievable. Didn't happen to Mr. Adler? Is that it? Okay, shortly thereafter, in October, uh, we received the pricing estimates on Old Brownsville conversion based on the design that Renaissance Group had done, and got the estimate of 755, 655 to 755,000 dollars. That would be nine offices, a conference room, and a reception desk space. It would not include a boardroom, and I will note that that price does not include FFNE. That was just for the construction. Do you want to try it?
That's right, that's right.
Just hit that one down. Uh, the value of the home was estimated to be 400 to 450,000 dollars. If we were to sell the home, we wouldn't have a need for a home, the home, if we don't use it as a central office. So I consider the total investment of 1.225, and that includes the, what I call the opportunity cost of. So I consider the total investment of 1.225, and that includes what I call the opportunity cost of... All right. In October 2022, we also received our concurrent pricing estimate, and this is kind of another option, another, another option. And that was a piece of property that we identified that felt like could more easily possibly be converted to a central office space. That was a 4,700-square-foot commercial and educational building in Lakeland, and we felt like that would provide 14 office, central office space. Again, not a boardroom for the board, but the building and land cost in that case was 1.2 million, and the renovation cost was going to be another nearly half a million for a total cost. Again, and these are both without FFNE of 1.657. You're great at that. Where we are is, I am to the point, having done the due diligence, and again, I want to be clear, we talked about awkward moments. To me, it's awkward as the superintendent to be saying, we need to build a place for me to work. It was particularly awkward when it was just me, but as the board knows, I'm getting there. As the board knows, I've got a growing number of just tremendous, outstanding, talented, kind, wonderful individuals that I think all deserve and need, not a consistent place to work, but also a comfortable place to work. This is not something where, you know, like every other building we've done, we don't propose building a luxury palace, but we want a building where we can do hard work and do it effectively and collaborate efficiently. I really, I probably should have included this. Mr. Adler and a number of his colleagues currently work out of Lakeland Elementary School out of a lack of space. And we didn't have space at City Hall for them. So we've already got a situation where we're kind of working from disparate locations. So we had priced a central office of approximately 10,000 square feet. This would be 26 offices, which would give us room to grow. This would include a board meeting room that is actually a little bit bigger than this one, not much, but a little bit bigger than this board meeting, so comparable. It would include five conference rooms. We do have a high demand for conference rooms with the things that we do at the central office. The estimate right now, or close to now, is that the construction cost on this would be 2.4 million. I will note that does not include FFNE. I think the FFNE, we would be able to step into gradually and probably use some Shelby County capital funds that come about annually to take care of that. But I wanted to compare apples to apples with the other proposals. So this is, just to note, this is the, and actually, I will also note, this is outdated. My understanding is that there's an updated plan or plat that will be presented to the board, so I don't want to get ahead of the Lakeland Meadows developers. They've been great, so don't anybody hold them to this. But the piece of property that's at the bottom center is the piece that we own. And Ms. Childs, if you'll hit it one more time for now. As you can see, it says the future Lakeland Municipal Elementary School site, and that's their language. But that part that kind of doglegs down, and you can see that it's got frontage on US 70, if you were to follow that line, that's the horizontal line, that's not the one on US 70, is just take it straight across, that would basically be the proposed five or so acres that would be the central office site. With frontage and an entrance off US 70, there'd be room in the back for a warehouse space, which is something a lot of central offices, locally and in lots of places, have done. And to me, right now, that is what the proposal is, based on kind of our due diligence and our experience with these other spaces. And then I think one more click. At this point, and again, board members have been appraised of every step of this, my recommendation to the board is a motion, just to get started, authorizing the executive committee to negotiate a contract with Renaissance Group to design a central office for Lakeland School System. Presumably, this would be a design that would be schematically designed for that site, although that doesn't necessarily have to be set in stone, but that is based on our experience, based on our history, and based on really the need to provide, you know, this piece for our central office staff. That's my recommendation. And I think there's one that says questions if you click it, and then you're done. You've batted a thousand of them. I can't believe I was fat fingering that. So are there any questions or comments from the board?
Discussion? So at this point, how many staff, central office staff, do you have right now?
I'd have been prepared for that, because I have it somewhere.
Okay. Well, why are you looking that up?
Well, we were adding one this week. Not all of them work at the central office, but what we can...
Yeah, no, I mean, the people, yeah, I mean, central office...
No matter where they work.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I had the same question.
And not, I'm not saying all of those would come...
Well, yeah, because some of those, there's no plans for them to work at the central office. I want to make sure.
We call central office staff, there's 21, and probably... Adding one on the 17?
17 that are central office location-based, is that right?
Yeah, I just want to include those who are working out of LES and LPS and at home and wherever else, a coffee shop, I don't know.
That would actually, that would actually report to this central office. If they're going to stay at LPS or LES, I wouldn't want to, I mean, I want to understand that headcount separately.
I've got, I'm doing this right, I've got 12. Plus the 13. Plus we've got some that'll be in our budget proposal, additional central office staff.
Do you yet know what you're anticipating the total number to be once we have all four grades?
I don't anticipate it being more than 25, if that's the question, but we did talk about possibly designing it, and there's a, this was in the program as well, as an alternate, a potential alternate, leaving a second story kind of unfinished for additional spaces if we got there. I feel pretty confident that the 25 would get us down the road quite a bit.
I know we've discussed it for years, as your slide indicated, but for the amount of money, you know, that the house would take, and then it'd be very temporary and limited, and then, you know, another space, you know, a commercial space we looked into, and then it still wouldn't be what we wanted, and it'd be a lot of money. I really like the idea, and I think long-term, it will be cheaper if we just build what we need. And so I'm excited that we're at this point and, you know, want to hear more about what we can, our executive committee can find out.
Anybody else before I ask a question?
Yeah, you know, I think it's important, just from a recruiting standpoint, to retain and recruit the best, we already have the best, but to retain them and then recruiting new talent is important to have a good workspace. And thank goodness that people have bought into the vision, and, you know, you obviously bought into the vision, and it's just helpful to have these things where you know you're going to have a professional place to work and come and have, you know, a nice, a nice work environment. So it's important to, this is part of the school system. This is part of what we have to do, not only is it the schools, but the central office as well. And there, you look at the other municipalities around us, they have, they have facilities that are, that are very worthy of their staff, and they, some have really spent money on them. I think, I know you'll be very frugal and very conservative in your approach on them, so. That's it. It's more of a comment than anything.
And Dr. Hor, I think we've talked about this, but it's also important to note, there's a time imperative, because right now, you're in classrooms. That's right. If you call me during arrival or dismissal, you can hear the announcements. We're working on that. But no, that's exactly right. We feel comfortable that we will be fine for this year, and we think we can get through next year with the ninth and 10th graders. By the time you get to three grade levels at Lakeland Prep, we need to be gone. So it's a similar timeline as the deadline for the campus drive extension, really.
How long would it take to build it, have they...
I'm not expert. I've gotten a little better at this. It would be less than a year, certainly. I mean, we built Lakeland Middle in a year, so, I mean, I'm thinking it could possibly, depending on what time of year you started, it could possibly be a 10-month.
And then I was going to piggyback off what Michelle was saying, so my question was whether the 26 offices would get you, would allow you room for growth? And then you said a second story would be a possibility, correct?
I think that would be on top of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and Ms. Millspaw was 100% right, as she tends to be. Like, when we get everybody together that we consider central office, that includes the technology folks kind of work onsite. We've got instructional facilitators that work onsite. We don't plan at this point to bring them back. We like them to be in the building. Just some things like that.
So just a quick recap. So the home that we had talked about, I mean, I know we purchased it and we talked about converting, that had nine office spaces? Is that the correct number?
That was about all we felt like we could get out of there.
And we're talking about that, that wouldn't even work with our current staff that we have.
Correct, yeah. That would most likely, for example, leave, we call it the, y'all call it the West Wing, right, over there at Lakeland Elementary? There's a classroom space that has one of the instructional facilitators, Mr. Adler, coordinated school health facilitator, and our EIS Skyward Coordinator, Cindy Smith.
So if we spent money there, that would be, that would not fix any of our, that would only fix potentially at Lakeland Prep, wouldn't fix any of our issues at Lakeland Elementary, and the money behind that to build the central office, just if we said we were going to do that on a temporary basis?
Correct. You'd almost have to immediately look at expanding that space and doing, and, you know, an expansion in the back of an already converted home. And I think in terms of, again, being stewards of taxpayer dollars, the other disadvantage of that is as soon as you start ripping out walls and turning the kitchen into a reception and, you know, converting it, it's no longer as valuable as a piece of real estate. I mean, at this point, we believe the house has about $450,000, worth of value that could be put towards a project like that, if that's the direction the board decided to go. You make too many changes to that residential property. Coming at.
And then the commercial space that we looked at, the existing commercial building and conversion for that one, that would potentially, based on the numbers I was hearing roughly, hold what we have now, but wouldn't necessarily allow for what we potentially are going to need for build out for all four grades, is that...
I think we'd be very, in fact, I think even with this additional staff and what I anticipate being in the budget that we'll bring to you, we might even be short, yeah. Sharing offices, yeah.
So essentially, the two options we looked at are just not big enough for us to get even to a full K through 12 system, is what we think?
I believe that's true, yes.
Okay. Just so...
Yeah, not without substantial expansion.
Okay. So we're talking like, so we would invest whatever the number was, 1.5 million, and then we would have to turn around, invest whatever, 100,000, million, whatever, to expand that facility because it's not big enough, is...
I believe, yes, that's accurate.
Okay. Just for clarity.
And the third scenario also would free up those office...
I was just going to say that the third scenario also would free up those office spaces at LES, which I think is, that helps. I mean, they're kind of...
They are needed, in fact, yeah.
So they would free them up, and you said some are classrooms and some are offices, or smaller functional spaces at LES, is that right? You said maybe one or two people are in classrooms at LES?
Are you in front of the West Wing?
Yes, the West Wing.
Those are office spaces that actually, we built a small suite of offices when we did the expansion at LES.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on this item?
About, do you know yet about how many square feet that building potentially might be?
Yeah, about 10,000 square feet.
And possibly having a, what'd you call it, a storage area for buildings?
That's actually not, the construction of that has not been contemplated and is not included in the price. Basically, what I was saying is with that five acres, you'd have more than enough room, have an office that you could build out the top level and then have a nice-sized warehouse in the back. I mean, you'd have plenty of room.
So essentially, it would be laid out for future needs for future boards?
Yeah, it would be master planned with that in mind.
So there'd be longer-term plans or whatever, or be laid out with those longer-term plans in mind?
Yep. Both Arlington and Germantown built their central offices with warehouse space in the back.
I have a, this may be more of a, I'm not sure if this is pro temp, but the item is listed as number one, and I was going to ask if, just from a clerical standpoint, I think there was a formatting issue there. Do we make this item 10 and just add sequence in from there?
I think we said we could make it 9.5, as I mentioned that kind of quickly, maybe, under my breath. No, that's okay. Platform, yeah.
Nine and three quarters?
So the house you were talking about, would we, would it, would we sell it? Is that what you're saying with the house?
That would really be a separate conversation for the board.
But potentially, that could be, that could take $400,000 to $500,000 off this price tag, potentially, correct? And then, the, could offset it, right? And then the capital money from Shelby County, if that works out, that can be used for construction of, if it comes like we are expecting it to come, it can be used as part of the funding mechanism for this, too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Those funds have not been budgeted for anything other than, so.
Right. Okay.
Discussion on this item?
Close discussion.
Question is closed. All in favor of approving, repeat it exactly. Oh, there it is. The motion authorizing the executive committee to negotiate a contract with Renaissance Group to design a central office for Lakeland School System, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Chairman, just a quick point of order, yeah, can, I think we need to make a, we brought it to the, we brought the agenda item, but we did make a motion, so his recommendation.
That's true, yeah.
So if we could revisit that one?
Yeah, not a problem. Is there a motion to authorize the executive committee to negotiate a contract with Renaissance Group to design a central office for Lakeland School System?
So moved.
Do we have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, let's take a vote. Is there any more discussion? Closing the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on FY 2223 budget amendments.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, motion and a second. Dr. Hor.
Yes, the budget amendments are before you. I want to give just a brief explanation. The 141 amendments at the top, which is our general fund, this is actually a wash. If you look at the bottom, at the revised budget and then the proposed amendment, it's exactly the same. There was, there were some funds that had to be moved to the liability insurance category, and because we took on these additional properties, we own more properties now, and we own these outbuildings, and our liability insurance actually went up about $30,000. And so those were able to be moved within the function, these are the financial terms, they could be moved within the function without board approval to take care of that, but in order to, and they were mainly moved from legal, but in order to replenish those funds, we're asking the board to approve making legal whole. So they were removed from smaller items where there was some flexibility there, if that all makes sense. It took me a minute to understand it myself, but that's what we're requesting there. Then under 142, those are our, that's our grants and federal grants budget, and as you know, there are constantly changes, but there are more changes than usual on this one. There was a recalculation, particularly of Title I and Title II, and like a lot of districts, we're actually going to get quite a bit less money than we anticipated in those grants, and we've already begun to adapt to that. It's not anything that is, I don't think, going to cause any pain points for anybody, although there are just a couple of projects, we're hoping to do that they won't be able to, but that is all to supplement, as we know, not supplant, so it's not anything that folks were necessarily counting on. The net change in that position is only, it actually goes up, which is confusing to what I just said, of 2,620, but that's because some of the other grants came back higher. So that's why it looks like there's a lot of activity in there. But, and approval of this budget amendment.
During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one.
Next item is discussion action on approval of Lakeland School System job descriptions.
So because we're going to take these as a whole in the approval process, can you speak to the one you would like to make some specific discussion on? I was going to do it, the motion to actually approve it, because we don't know what we're approving. I don't want to make the...
I think you can bring it to the floor, and you don't have to approve it necessarily.
Okay. So is there a motion to bring this item to the floor?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Hor.
Okay, so it's really two separate things. I am requesting...
Okay, so it's really two separate things. I am requesting the approval of all the job descriptions, but under the category of the Board of Education Secretary, this would, it would be two motions in my mind, there would be one to approve the job descriptions. I am requesting from the board that the Board of Education Secretary stipend be increased from $1,500 a year to $5,000 a year. This is a, a, as the board knows better than anybody, the role of Board of Education Secretary is a very involved job. It takes a lot of extra time, it takes a lot of detail work and specificity, and we are very fortunate to have somebody as, as capable as Jessica Millspaw, who's also the, she's probably the only director perhaps in any school system that also serves as the board secretary, but she's so good at it that I think nobody wants her to stop doing it. But I, I do think we've gotten off, off base with that stipend, that, that really probably should have been taken up at the start of the year, but my request to the board is that that, that be approved, approved with a voice motion, retroactive to this year, so the 2022, 23 stipend schedule.
Is there any discussion on any of the job descriptions from the board, or that specific, we can take, if y'all want to take that one? I know that's a separate motion for the amount.
Yeah, because the amount's not in the job description, actually.
Right, so the description would stay, but the amount would be a separate item. Is there any question on the job descriptions for any of these positions?
I think I had some questions about the high school assistant adding the 9th through 12th, and I'm a little bit.
We get that one?
Middle, high school assistant principal. It's professional under minimum training and qualifications, professional Tennessee teaching license with an elementary, middle grade endorsement. Want to end that to also indicate high school as well?
I apologize, Mr. Acton sent me several questions, and I think we got most of them addressed and, and.
I, I sent you, yes.
I think I sent you an answer, but didn't send Ms. Millspaw any, any. We can do that.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can take care of that.
Was one more that may need that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, as a, Sharon, I subscribe to the Oxford comma, so. I'm fine with everything else.
Okay.
Well, on the instructional technology facilitator along that lines, could it be someone that had a high school teaching license, or it should only be those grades?
But we did update that to say.
Yeah, it is updated, thank you, refreshed, okay.
Discussion on these items? So at this point, we haven't made a mo, we've just made a motion to discuss, we haven't made, made a motion to approve, I'm trying to remember, what motion did we make?
Yeah, I think you would need a motion to approve the job descriptions and then a separate motion to increase the stipend for the Board of Education Secretary.
All right, is there a motion to approve the job descriptions with the administrative edits that would not be required?
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the, all the job descriptions listed, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So there's a separate item, is there a motion to, and to change, is it the stipend schedule or the stipend for the Board of Education Secretary? Its current amount to 5,000 a year effective for the 22, 23 school year?
So moved.
Fiscal year. You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and there's a second, any discussion on this item?
Yes. I totally agree with this, this obviously, it's 7:15 at night, after you've already done a full-time director job, and we appreciate everything you do, and thank you for bringing this to our attention.
It's overdue.
Second, that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on this item? None, I will say, thank you, you keep us straight, you keep us between the ditches, which is very hard to do sometimes, so. So we thank both of y'all for keeping us, keeping us in line and on the straight and narrow and where we should be, so thank you very much. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, next item.
Next item is to finalize the TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute headcount, hotel rooms, et cetera.
So we don't have to take official action on this, if everybody would just let Dr. Horr know, if, if, we certainly can have discussion on this child, if you would like to speak to it, but if everybody just would let Dr. Horr know, I think it's the Thursday and Friday in February before President's Day weekend, does that sound correct?
February 16th and 17th.
I think I've said on record before I will not be there.
Yeah, Jessica, do you just need to, I'm, I'm going.
Will not be able to, and I won't be able to go.
At first, I'm, I'm not able to go, I'm not going, actually. Yep.
All right, next item.
Next item is the disclosure of statement of interest.
And so this is just a reminder for everybody that I think it's due January 31st, does that sound right? Just make sure you complete that, again, board secretary for keeping us straight and making sure we do our responsibilities of our position. So this is your final reminder before the deadline. All right, next item.
All right, next item is approval of Village Virtual as an alternative credit option.
Skip 14.
Yeah, we skipped 14 in the policy.
I am, oh, no, I asked if we could switch the order on those, because.
I wrote 15 and 16.
No, we got 14 as policy manual.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Number 14 is the review of policy manual section.
No recommendations at this time.
Okay.
Last time I'll say that. Thank you for taking me.
So is there any other, any board members that have any items from section two, or certainly, as the board is always welcome to bring any policy forward, is there any items from section two that anybody would like to bring forward to review or potentially put on the agenda for next month? All right, hearing none, next item.
Ms., Madam Chair, if I could for a moment, it just struck me that Ms. Thomas is now serving two roles. You're, you're also the ethics representative, right?
I guess.
When we swapped last year, or when we did this last year, I think we swapped for you to become the ethics contact or person.
I think that's on our agenda for February. I think we discussed today that it's on our agenda for February.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that.
It will be on our agenda for February.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
All right, nothing for section two, so now we're on the approval of Virtual Village.
Yes, next item is the approval of Virch, Village Virtual
Village Virtual.
as an alternative credit option.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor? You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, Dr. Horr.
Okay, this is one of the, the growing pains of this nearly brand-new policy, that we're actually gonna refer to the policy itself next, but Policy 4.209, alternative credit option, states that high school students can earn credit by completing online courses offered through agencies or institutions approved by the board. That's the policy as it states now. So I am requesting that the board approve Village Virtual as an alternative credit option, and then in the next item, I'll talk about why I believe that policy should be amended.
Is there any discussion on this item? Or about what this is?
Oh, I, I sure can, thank you, I, I was going to, but this is probably the time to do it. We had a student come back to us from another school, where he was taking high school courses that basically we don't offer. And so the question becomes, how do we, how do we quickly and efficiently accommodate this student that's coming back mid-year? He started a course in the first semester at another school, we don't offer that course, our normal provider does not offer that course, so we, we had to start exploring options. So Ms. Decker and her team have consulted with other school systems and gotten recommendations on what's the best online curriculum that this student could take in the meantime to ensure that he is able to complete the credit that he started in the first semester. Long story short, this won't be the last time this happens, this credit's about, I mean, this policy's less than a semester old, and we're already running into, the board has to approve you know, online or alternative credit options, which, which doesn't seem efficient. Next time, we might not have a board meeting the following Monday after the student returns, so that, that is the recommendation of, of the school and of Ms. Deloso, and what we'll hope to do in the next item is amend this so that the superintendent can basically authorize the approval of alternate credit options.
For my ignorance, typically, what sort of class would what type, and I'm not asking this particular student's situation, but what type of classes would warrant this need?
So it may be somebody that has, we get this a lot of times with overseas students, or maybe students that have, they may come back and they're a ninth grader, but they need geometry. So we don't, we don't have students that, we don't have a geometry class yet, you know, for the, I'm sorry, not geometry, maybe it's Algebra II in the ninth grade, you know, or maybe you get an eighth grader that comes back and.
So, um, school offered, my daughter was taking Spanish in grade, and so when I'm over there talking to them from Poland, they're like, oh, do we need to find a Spanish II online program? Because we didn't have a high school, and I'm like, no, for us personally, it was really more like a pre-Spanish, which is very similar to what our seventh grade offered, and Spanish one was perfectly fine, but I appreciated the flexibility, they're like, we'll find an online Spanish if that's what you need. And, I mean, personally, I'm not, you know, and I think overall we aren't big fans of online courses, because I think in-person is better, but obviously, you have exceptional situations where you don't want the student to lose that credit, especially mid-year, so. And I appreciate how Lakeland schools go above and beyond to try to accommodate unique situations of students when they have moved around.
They're not always as clean as a semester move, I mean, it could be for, for whatever reason, a student moves here midsemester and they've started a course in, let's say, sociology and.
And this is supportive of our military families that you mentioned earlier as well.
Yeah. So, the first, the, the, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Burnett, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, is there a fiscal impact for this?
There is, there is, yes.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
Not specifically in this case, I don't, I don't recall what the, I'm not even sure if they shared what the, the dollar amount was.
I mean, so we expect to be able to pay this within our current budget?
We do, yes, yeah.
It's not significant then?
Right.
It's, it's cheaper than hiring a teacher to teach one, one kid in one section of a class, but.
Is this, is Village Virtual the only virtual option right now, or are there others and this one's being added?
There are others and this one is being added
Okay.
in this circumstance, but we anticipate there may be situations where, sometimes you, you can research that particular class is better with this one platform than another, so rather than try to anticipate what those would all be and bring them to the board, or call special call meetings of the, of the board, you know, as these things come up, we're, we're asking the board to trust me and trust the, the, the staff at the school to, to recommend those classes, like you do with a lot of other things.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving Vir, Village Virtual as an approved alternate credit option, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, next item.
Next item is Policy 4.209, alternative credit options itself.
Is there a motion to get this item on the floor?
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, Dr. Horr.
We've just spoken to this, but basically, this is the, the policy currently says that these alternative credit options must be approved by the board. Our recommendation is that these may be approved by the superintendent and/or designee.
Any discussion on this item? I have a question, kind of not related to this change, but just related to the policy. So I know I have had conversations with parents that, like in high school, have taken personal finance, let's say, over the summer or something like that. Does this policy prohibit something like that, because they want to take, either graduate early or they want to do something, would this policy prohibit? Because I, I was just reading the line that talks about as long as the high school is not offered as an in-person format or whatever, does this policy prohibit a child from being able to take something like that and graduate early? Because I know there have been some instances of children that I've known that have done that.
I think we, let's see, we spent a lot of time talking about this one. It's been a minute.
And you can research it, I, I mean, I know this is, it's not specifically related to a change here.
I think under this policy, either it's not offered in person, or it is offered and there is an unavoidable scheduling conflict. Like the, the, the kid can't meet, the student can't meet his educational goals and take that class, like there's two classes that he needs and, or he or she needs, and they're both offered at the same time, for example, would be one. This one does not allow students to take classes that are offered and just choose to take them online.
And that the, the amendment superintendent and/or designee, are you anticipating that would be a principal at the school being that approver, or like Ms. Deloso? So I certainly trust you, and I'm not saying I don't trust, but I, I certainly would like it to come forward to your office and not necessarily designated, I mean, to central office, not say, so I, I would like it.
My intention is that it, that it would be, if it is my designee, it would be probably Ms. Deloso.
Okay. So I, I just would like it to come to central office, not necessarily be at a school level, it's just.
Understood, yeah, our intention is not to designate it down to the school level.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that, because I had the same question.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, next item.
Don't believe there are any additional items on the agenda.
Are there any announcements?
Announcements, I think that's the first. It's still so early.
I know, everybody's suggesting, all right.
I think we have homecoming coming.
Oh, basketball homecoming.
Wednesday.
Wednesday is ninth grade homecoming.
Our first ever ninth grade basketball.
I was so impressed, I got to watch my first game the other night, and it was, I'm just amazed by their athleticism and I'm jealous at the same time.
And I think we have some audition, or something coming up for the plays. I know in like two months LES has, or less than, or maybe two months LES has the big auction, I know they've kicked off their planning. LEF, is there, there was something, I know we just finished the lights and that was super.
That was, that was very successful, and thank you for everybody who participated in that. And then LEF is in early stages of planning for next event in June, I believe.
And then I have heard the PTO is planning a ninth grade formal, the first ever ninth grade formal, that's offsite location, so I think, or actually, sorry, it's high school formal, even though we only have ninth grade, I think it's the first high school formal, so there, that's some very exciting suits. So lots of firsts going on, it's very exciting. So nails and shoes and dresses, fun stuff.
Oh my.
Go Lions. Any other announcements? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Do you put a date at the auction?
Ending the strand.